That they're going to deal with that we are the recipient of those options. That I'm not ready to pack it up and say, oh my God, the sky is falling. I don't believe that. I really don't.
I just want to answer Commissioner Lundy's question. Two grants, the first grant nineteen and a half million is, as Mr. Parnell said, tied to the dredging, the wave barrier and the parking lot. The second grant is sport fish grant. That's X amount. That's part of what's driving the size of the parking lot because when you get that grant, you have to guarantee there's a certain amount of parking available for sport fish. So they're linked, two separate grants though.
Does the second grant exist?
No, the second grant does exist. The application is in and we've been talking to the state for it and it's been in for a while. We don't have it confirmed yet. The likelihood is we can get it because it's based off of receipts from sport fish.
So then where's the third phase for the commercial fishermen expansion slips? Where does that come in?
Again, we don't have that money. So at some point, you know, you need to say, okay, how much does the borough put in? How much does the state put in? How much do we want to invest if we want to invest at all? So those are some of the things we have to take a look at. So it's a big project. Can we expect the state to pay for all of it? No. So the question then becomes how much is, are we willing to pay? How much are we able to pay? Because anything we do pay, there's debt service we have to tie in. And then we have, as Mr. Parnell said, we have to identify that there are going to be revenue sources associated with that. Going back to the parking that was brought up earlier, the question I asked Mr. Vandeville was identify sources of revenue. So he put together a report that identified a wide variety of sources of revenue, one of which was you can put boats there. It wasn't that it was going to happen, but the question was identify sources of revenue. People kind of caught on to that as this is going to happen. What we have a requirement to do is to identify how we can pay for things potentially in the future.
Bill?
As far as the financing for is concerned, although I did it for the Lutac Dock thing, it's three weeks or a month ago, I sent two sources of federal grants to both Mr. Sosa and Mr. Vandeville. So there is federal money available. Agreed, we got to go through the application process and meet all the requirements, but there is money out there. It's a case of digging and finding just the right one. So the tap has not been turned off. And by the way, I'm one who's not in favor of grants to start with, but sometimes you're in a spot that you at least got to try.
Sir, did you want to say?
Well, it had to do with the question of aesthetics in financing and there was a question is who's going to ask, should this be delayed? And I'd like to ask the administration if they would support an effort to delay it so that a little more community, I don't know what the word is, cooperation, melding, some of the ideas that are coming here can be put together and developed a little bit more. Basically take it off the fast track.
I think anytime you look at something, you want, you would like to have public support. And in a project of this size, it's not the administration that's going to say, we're moving forward or we're not. This is a question for our elected representatives. This is a question for our appointed planning bodies and it's a question that the administration is prepared to support them on. The thing I'll reinforce is also something that Mr. Parnell said earlier. You know, if you look at our state priorities and our federal priorities, if you look at the top three priorities, it's wastewater treatment, Lutac Dock, and small boat harbor. So those are the three things that are on my mind. And as I take a look at, you know, where do we put money? My focus all the time is on how do I provide funds for those three top priorities that are state and federal priorities.
Of course, mine.
Yeah, I just, I guess, thinking about, it's difficult for me to understand where this wants to go because I don't know how you find a consensus on anything. And I'm just wondering what consensus looks like on this. I mean, the vote was four to two for the assembly to approve the plan we have and that's not a clear vote, but it was four to two and so it passed. And I don't like parts of this plan either. I don't, you know, I like some of the other designs better, but I also like the idea of a harbor expansion since I use the harbor for my main source of income. And I guess I'm just curious, where do we draw the line? I mean, somebody's always going to be unhappy with how we proceed on this. And I'm not saying we have to have consensus, but at some point we have to have efficiency and agree that we may not all like parts of it and none of us is going to like any part of it, but we have to somehow either decide to go forward with it or not. And I guess this roundabout talk of let's halt the project is really scary to someone who wants to see it somehow go forward. Whether I like every little piece of it or not, we have to find enough consensus, I think, to at least agree to go forward and not say we're going to stop a project that's taken this long to get to this point. And that's just how I feel as a harbor user.
Are you okay with your mortgage fees doubling so to pay for some maintenance on that stuff?
If I have to pay more to maintain a nicer harbor than you'd want, yes, Joe, I can do that. I can pony up what I need to pony up as a harbor user. I can agree to do that because I know it's not cheap.
I hope the assembly has the courage to do that.
Well, I mean, four to two is not a close vote. I understand that, but you know, it wasn't a split vote. You don't have, you have new officials on the assembly since that vote, so maybe it would be different if you brought it to the assembly again somehow. I'm never, you know, nobody is ever going to be 100% happy with this project is what I'm trying to say. But at some point, you have to figure out whether you're going to at least agree that it needs to go forward or not. And halting it now is the part that scares me about why? Why are we going to halt it when it's taken this long to get to this point?
I think, for me, I think that the piece of missing information that most people are, that fuels the fear and the desire to slow down and halt it is that we didn't, we don't have authoritative examination of the costs that are inherent in it. And I think the community is somewhat basically conservative in the sense that the project has a number for what we think it's going to cost to achieve this certain level, but what goes beyond that has never been put down on paper.
And I haven't been here long enough to understand if all of those studies were done when you built it in school.
Yes.
Or when you built the Port Chilcote Dock or when you built new capital projects in this town, is that standard procedure?
Yes.
I don't know, but if it is, then.
Before the school was built, a search came in and did a complete, you know, analysis. There's names for them and I forget them, to tell you the truth. But I mean, there's always that kind of forward look at what is the impact? What are we getting into? What is it going to mean for us? And though, and it's true, it was, I think that the first, it was 2004 is when the feasibility study that was done by the Army Corps of Engineers came out in 2004. But it was from, I'm not going to say it was a totally different harbor because it was out there, but it was a north designed harbor. And this one is, I don't know how much different, but I mean, I think that the issues that have been raised, like have we, when we've taken a few stabs at, you know, how much is it going to cost per year to maintain the sinks? How much is it going to cost per year to do this and that and all those kinds of things? But it hasn't really been put together in a formal way. I think that makes people in the community feel that it's okay to go forward with it.
Some people in the community, some people.
Yeah, some.
Joe, so now that you've heard all this comment and I don't know what, I don't know what the goal of this meeting was or is, but what are you, what are you taking away from this? What is your, what are you going to do?
I'm going to call my representative and senator and tell them we need help up here that our Lutac Dock is crumbling. I want to ask the manager a question and I want to say thank you for coming. I'm impressed that you would take your time and come down here to open for them. But I'm just worried about Lutac and the engineer's report says it's unsafe and I believe the forklift's out there working on there. If something were to happen, we'd have a terrible liability suit that would do nothing but damage the city, the town probably for a long time. And I was wondering if there's anything you could say to alleviate my fears? Say we're working with the, we're working with the legislature to get some money or we, you know, is there anything you can tell me that alleviates my fears?
Sure. A couple of things that have been done with Lutac. I'll agree, it's in really bad shape. So what have we done? The big problem we have at Lutac has to do with the cells and several of them are losing fill. One of the ones that was losing fill had a hole opened up in it and that is just in the area where AML and Delta Western do most of their work. So what did we do there? Well, early in the year, we spent about thirty-five or forty thousand dollars putting a concrete patch on that at the point of greatest stress. And what this allowed us to do is to spread the load. So where most of the pass pass goes on for AML and where the operations of Delta Western take place, we reinforced the structure in that one. It's not going to last forever. It's a patch, but it does buy us time. We were given about three years, taking a look to do something, taking a look at the report that was done by PND. We have been able to tie into some of the work that the state is doing with their ferry terminal. And at the state's expense, they are taking down two and a half of the cells. So this saves us probably a hundred thousand dollars or a hundred fifty thousand dollars on anticipated costs. So while this doesn't deal with the cells we're operating on, this removes some of the threat associated with some of the cells that we're currently looking at. We've had a group that's been meeting initially on a more regular basis and much more inter lately. And we're going to get that group meeting again to take a look at what are some of the options. One of the things that we're doing, and we went out to Lutac about a week and a half ago and we met with the team from Western Marine who's doing the ferry construction out there. And they took us through some of the challenges and the successes they're having. On the bad side, when they took apart one of the cells and they took the fill out, it looks like Swiss cheese, even on the backside of one of them. On the plus side, they were really, really, really hard to take apart. So as bad shape as they're in, they took a beating carrying these things apart. That said, one of them ruptured just seven years ago. So a cell could rupture at any time. That's the reality we face and that's the reality the state was facing over there. So what we also got out of Western Marine was some input on, based on what they've been seeing, if we wanted to go with different alternatives. Now, what was proposed by PND was a complete tear down and rebuild. Very expensive, but you get what you want. What we didn't know at the time is what was the state of the soils, what was the water level and what were some of the other concerns? Western Marine shared that with us and there's some potential that if we dug out behind the cells, poured concrete in there, put up a new wall in front and anchored through to the concrete, we could shore up the front side of the cells. So it gives us a different option and a different approach for something we can do out of Lutac. There's one or two other approaches we can take a look at. So the group looking at that said, okay, what we're going to look at is sending an RFQ out to a number of companies and getting some other designs in to take a look at different approaches than what we've currently seen from PND, some that may come in at a better price. We need those designs if we're going to go to the state and say, we need some money and we need someone to work with us. The other thing we're looking at is potential options for augmentation of operations at Lutac. If we do a twenty million dollar bond, we need to do four million dollars of business a year out at Lutac, Lutac, to pay the service on the debt and to handle operations. So we've been getting a sense at Lutac at what it would take in terms of how much money we would need to bring in. We're not doing that much right now with the customers we have out there. So we're also in the business of identifying other customers for Lutac. So if we can't get the money from the state or the federal government, we're going to have to figure out a way to bring partners in so that we can keep that critical piece of what infrastructure, our number one federal priority, our number two state priority functioning in the long term. So that's what we've got going on.
Well, that's all I've got, folks. It's like government, it's long, slow process, you know? I just advise you to lobby. What did you say?
Well, I'm really happy that some people came that know some of the base information because there was an awful lot of misinformation out there, but I'm really pretty depressed. The way the plan is now, it's just for phase one and it's going to look really ugly for quite a while. I'd really like to see the plan, the expanded plan and, you know, ideas for getting that other money so we can beautify this, you know, whatever, as mentioned. Soldering dolphins on the baffled wall. I mean, you know, there's things that can be done or landscaping and all that. None of that's, nothing is right now veggieed for improving how it's going to look. It's going to be mud and rocks and, you know, God, feet and feet. So anyway.
Well?
Let Don go first.
The fill there is going to be sour when it comes out. You're not going to go nuts on that for five or six years probably. It's sour ground and if, you know, if you want to be honest about it, it's going to take a while unless you go out there and fertilize it and lime it and take care of it before.
It's going to smell too.
But, well, I don't know about smell, but it's a matter that it's not been exposed in the air, it's not decomposed, it's under the water and it's not going to, you know, it's going to take a few years before it'll grow. I was on a project when we done small truck and mud bay intersection change and the state had us, we put a large fill in there, the state had us go plant older in it. We planted older in it four times and they never did drill. And then after a few years, they picked up a drilling their own. So I don't know how many, you know, a lot of you know things about barging, if you get sour material, you can't drill anything in it. And that is, you know, I call it sour. It's not necessarily smell, it just is sterile.
Make it acidic.
So, and it is, and it is going to, it's not going to be pretty. I've never told anybody that any of this is pretty. It's functional and it will make our boat harbor work, but it's not, in my opinion, this is not something that's pretty.
We need to make it pretty because it's our boat.
Will, you want to say something?
Yeah, all right. I'm a little person, I represent a lot of fishermen down there. I'm a U.S. coordinator of the fishing field net. And we need a working, it's a working harbor. It's not a yacht marina. I mean, like what Don said, it might not be free, but we need, I mean, go down there today, every parking spot was full. There's guys trying to get crab pots in and out. I mean, we need more parking there. I mean, so it's a big lot. We can pull more boats out in the fall and make some extra revenue on that. If we don't have money for floats now, we need to take advantage of money we have, make it as big as we can. I mean, there's wait lists a mile long. I'm lucky to get a wait list by, off the wait list by the time I'm Don's age. And I mean, there's a lot of fishermen there. I mean, if we're going to give cruise ships free docking, I mean, that benefits three or four people. I mean, we got fifty-four gillnet permits in this town. I mean, a lot of this town that lives here year-round uses that harbor. I mean, jack my mortgage up, I mean, everyone, Canadians come in there, people come from Skagway. I mean, it's used by everyone. I mean, you should look at jacking other stuff up too because, I mean, it's not just a benefit to us, it's a benefit to everyone in the community to have a bigger harbor. And there's a lot of fishermen and it's kind of discouraging when you can't get a power pedestal because they're moved over here and then two weeks later, that person's back in the salt and now I'm five stalls down in a different row. And there are multiple people like that in the harbor and we need more room. I mean, it would attract more workboats. I mean, there's no tie-up for large boats like Bavaria, like Downers and stuff. There are people on the waitlist that would love to bring their tenders up and park here, but there's just no room. So, I mean, it needs to be a working harbor. It doesn't need, I mean, I could really care less if there's dolphins on the thing. I want a bigger harbor so that all the fishermen in this town can have a place to work on their boats. I mean, if we can get it big enough to have a drive-down work ramp, I mean, Kenny Waller or someone with a welder, he has to drop it down with a crane to work on a boat. It's kind of ridiculous right now. So that's all I got to say.
I have a question for the fishermen, Margaret, John and Will. Is there, is there anything like a consensus among sport fish and con fish on a plan that you're, I mean, are you guys pretty much in agreement on what you need?
Yeah, yeah. Everyone wants more slips and more room there, yeah.
And I wonder, I can't remember if you were here or not earlier when they're talking about the possibility of the floating wave barrier versus the seven hundred foot steel wall. Do you know anything about that or were you here?
I wasn't here.
Do you know anything about the potential for a floating wave barrier to be as effective or effective versus the?
I'm not an engineer on that.
I was just curious.
While we're sitting here, I went and looked up the old report on the harbor website. The one the Army Corps of Engineers did. They only looked at two, the rubble mound and the current type of wave barrier we have. That's an independent group. Reason being, they only looked at two because those are probably the two that would work best here. And that's what the Corps of Engineers was looking at.
Well, I think you need a little more analysis on what sort of wave barrier there's. A lot of this depends on the wave barrier. People don't like the appearance of a thirty-foot-high wave barrier. So why don't we look at what is the disadvantage of having a floating wave barrier and find out, you know, some wave may get over it sometime, but I don't think that's going to happen very often. And you shouldn't design the whole thing for the one day where a wave, one wave comes over the top. We could have a tsunami here too, you know? So let's find out how concrete the, wrong word, how steel holds up at a floating wave barrier. And I think that would remove a lot of objections here tonight.
Joe, in answer to your concern or your statement there, the sport ramp is predicated on the wave barrier coming across and being able to protect the entire harbor. It is not predicated on a floating wave barrier where waves could possibly come over the top of it. If we do something different and get a floating wave barrier, then in all likelihood, we would not get that sport, that sport drive-down ramp.
Do we know that as a fact?
Yes, I do.
I think it's conjecture.
I think it's conjecture.
We need PND engineers to tell us what the facts are, cost-wise, effectiveness-wise.
And should I doubt that?
We need, we need them. I don't think we've got it.
Yeah, that's where my facts are coming from, Dave. I mean, I can't doubt the engineers' explanations on things.
Well, let's get the report with states.
Sitting there voting on it.
Portage Cove is a very protected cove from north and south wind. It does, you know, waves and extreme times waves that, you know, do roll in there, but a floating wave barrier could work, but it might cost twice as much. It would be the cost. There would be the issue.
I can understand that, Dave, but I'm just telling what the details are on the wave barrier versus that drive-down sport ramp. What the reason for having the drive-down sport ramp given to us is by having the wave barrier that we chose.
And effective wave.
Anything less, we would not get that drive-down ramp.
You are assuming, I know an engineer, that a floating wave barrier would somehow be less and it would not necessarily be less.
No, I'm just explaining the details that were explained to us before we gave them vote.
Joe, I would have a suggestion that we get PND engineers involved here. We're just, you know, because we're, we just got a bunch of ideas and we're going to get nowhere. We don't get them involved.
Who's going to pay for that?
I believe I was in the same position that you are with that. The sport ramp is, the only way to get that money is to have a certain length of wave barrier to protect it. The money, I believe, is linked to the protection of that ramp.
Yes.
As you make the wave barrier shorter, you, in theory, if you want to keep that sport ramp, you have to start taking out things like the drive-down rock ramp or the work ramp or more floats in the future and keep that outer sport ramp protected.
I'm just talking about the short, I'm just talking about a floating wave barrier that's always the same height when you look at it, but it can be just as long or maybe as anchored down at certain points.
But the state's not going to give money if they're not secure on there.
This is what you say. Now, I don't know that. And until I know that for sure, I'm going to call PND engineers and I'll do a lot of investigation on my own until I know that. But I don't think you know that. And I don't think you know that.
Okay.
Joe, I have a question for you. You did mention that that was in the report about, they did look at that.
I remember five years ago that they did look at those.
Okay.
Ways of coming over them and it was something else.
So I'm assuming it was looked at at some point and for whatever reason discarded.
It was looked at by committee and they passed it.
By the engineers.
Yeah. They dropped it out. They just looked at that. All this, oh yeah, that's been talked about. They went through that.
Let's get to report. Let's look at.
It's up to the, it's up to the assembly. If they want to spend that money to do that, it's, and then you've got to lobby your assembly person.
It already exists, that's what you're saying.
The study exists.
Yeah, so let's get a copy of it.
Mr. Coming in? Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Sosa. I know the borough website has endless information. Are these studies that were done for the borough by these different engineering firms, are they available on the website? Is there a way to access them so that as we all say, let's get that information? Is that available already?
Several of them are, but not all of them. But what I'm going to do is move through our records and post some of the other information that's out there. Normally what gets on there is the final studies or the studies that are used for decisions off of, off of, you know, the final ideas that make it to, that make it to the assembly. So that's most of what's on there. But I'm going to go through our records and see what else there is we can post.
Yeah, Trevor.
I just wanted to go back to Don's perception about the not putting this in the long time that it takes to deal with the dredging materials coming out of the harbor. And I'm wondering if there's another solution to putting that material and whether, if the parking lot was going to be on a lower level than, say, Lookout Park, how much of that fill do we really need to have there? Would it be possible to in fact put the fill somewhere else, maybe on Rogers or out in the bay or something and put the rocks there and then build with our own fill, a parking lot that works? And, you know, I mean, basically what we're looking at here is that the whole harbor is transformed from our little fishing village idyllic historic community to a commercial experience, you know, all the way from Rogers, then the boat harbor exists and on to the boat harbor and then the Port Chilcote Dock. So basically we're transforming the whole harbor at this point. And, you know, if we, if we have this ugliness for even a couple of years, it does not go well for the cruise ship industry. You know, they're not going to be thinking that this is a great place to come or any other visitor necessarily. It isn't an attraction by any stretch. So that's what I'm saying. If you could actually not have it be ugly and in fact have it function in the immediate present or immediate future as, in some form and have it look good in some form, which means, of course, we have to divert certain money from project one way or another, whether it's the baffle or the parking lot or the sewage pipe or whatever it happens to be, you've got to, you've got to move some money around. But I realize that the community is, gains a lot from the fishing industry and it also gains a lot from the tourism industry. And so we don't want to be cutting our risk to save our feed or whatever, so.
The cost of dumping that material, a lot of cost, very little more to put it onshore. If you don't use that material, put in a parking lot and haul it on by itself, the cost goes up three times. It's about triple the cost per yard to put it, as little as it can weigh, is to put it in there, truck it in there and throw it, build that as it is, to use the material that already, already present and place it there to start with. So part of it's the cost factor, you know? I mean, that's a whole bunch of make part. And if you, if you wanted to cover that, I mean, a couple of square meters of material that we close up by, then that would work. But the way, right now, the plan that is in effect, we really don't have a way to do it. We have factored up into order and alternatives. So there's some alternatives in that. The bids aren't high of that to break. The bids aren't high of that to break water, the wave barrier's going to be shorter, the stuff's going to kick around, or part of the dredging inside's not going to get done. So there's alternatives designed in the nest that we're talking about to do, to do things. And so it, you know, it may not lie happy in that way for a wave, but it might lie happy in six hundred. You know, I don't, I don't know. It depends on how that is. Right now, it seems like that the contractors are not that busy around because there's not a lot of federal money and stuff and big projects will last. They're, they think we're going to free competitive bid. We don't know that until the time comes.
Joe?
Yeah?
The 65% plan that's on the Borough website shows an offshore place for putting dredge boils. I would imagine that the clay is going to be very difficult to use. It's currently bottom of our harbor. We'd wind up getting put out in that offshore. When we got down to some decent stuff, rock and that, I think that's what would come up to be our parking lot. Another thing I want to point out is something Dave and I have dealt with. We have a person we deal with in our business, Matt Vickers, that runs a company called G7G, native oriented. The G7G stands for a native concept that what you do, you want to figure how it's going to be seven generations out. So you want to be looking at this a long ways out, not just for the quickie fixing problems.
Dave?
The golden rule of meetings like this is to not leave the meeting until you've established what you're going to do next. And so I think we're going to need to focus on that. And like, I think we need to get PND engineers involved. They've got another two-month extension on the 95%. So I think they might actually enjoy having a little more feedback on details. And so there could be actually a lot more wiggle room in there, like communicating with them. And if, you know, they're the engineers, if they say next nay on the flowing breakwater, well, then you can accept that. It costs twice as much. I know it could work, but it might cost twice as much. So that would be a deal breaker here probably. But we need their expertise now on these design details. It's like, we're just flapping our brains.
So that information might be in the reports that David puts, that Mr. Sosa puts on the website.
Yeah.
Is that a parent we have that?
And the way to, for everybody to just to stay in contact with this issue, stay in touch and keep you, giving input.
And the visual representation of what it will look like at high and low tide.
Right.
Five years from now.
And how additional facilities would be booked in? Are we pinning ourselves into a corner with something we're doing that we're not seeing? Or are future implements of this, whether they're like really feasible and how they'd be done? So if it is feasible, what future will we engineer?
You know, I, I'm sure you're ideaific, but my first concern is who is we and who is paying to have PND come up here and do this model? Because they don't give their services away for free. They're, you know, they're expensive. They're the job to be doing this. So I, I'm concerned is who we, who's doing it?
They are working presumably now and for the next two months on these design details. So this would be, seem to be a perfect time to communicate with them. And then have them working away in a vacuum doing stuff that we've already decided like it should be improved upon. Yeah, they need to know that.
The delay was the DDC because of the necessary extension of the sojelsol and it necessarily means PND are going to be continuing to generate hours on the process.
Well, they're still looking at it, but it's, I honestly, why wouldn't we engage, you know, in exchange with...
We're doing it. We're starting with start.
Well, I didn't see a whole lot of it from, you know, public information.
When, you're talking about 35%?
No, there's still not much public information. It's still pretty much a big, you know, like, just a couple of bold strokes and with no details and anyone knows because we haven't seen it.
I want to say something.
I can't hear.
Well, I put together a sheet on contact information for people at the state level that might be interested in what's going on in Haynes. If you folks, best you could do is lobby your assembly person if you'd like to see a change in the plan. I put this meeting together so we could hear each other and get our views out and I guess that's what happened and I don't, I'm not sure.
Well, I would just like to throw it out for my elected officials. Is, I don't know, I guess I would say, is it worth $3,000? Is it worth $5,000 to have a visual or have a model that people could look at and say, oh, that's what it looks like? I mean, I think it's worth that. I really do. Because I think what I heard most today is just concerns about people being unable to manage their own imagination about what this looks like. For myself, I never imagined that the metal wave barrier was going to be ugly. I mean, I never did. I always thought it was going to look, I mean, I like kind of a high-tech look, but maybe it's not. I mean, I don't know, but it... The one thing I did that I've gotten so much response from when they were building the, what's it, dock, the dock down, the PC dock, I went and I put sticks at the beach and said, here's where the rocks are going to end. And it's like, oh! I mean, just that simple act of illustrating something brought so much more understanding to people. So I'm just saying, if that's all that comes out of the meeting for me tonight is to have my elected officials understand that a visual, not a bird's eye view visual, but, you know, what are those paper mache things or whatever they do? You know, and, or somebody else that you can do it with computers, you know, and create, you know, models. I mean, you could call up PND, say, give me a $3,000 model. People want to know what this looks like. I mean, that might go a long, long way.
So is that what you're asking for the elected officials to do this for the administration?
I'm saying, I'm saying to you, Diana, if I was in, if I was in these positions, that's what I would do.
Oh, okay, because I don't, I hear we, but I don't know who we, you know.
Well, just what I hear in the room is like, what's one thing I keep hearing over and over from this with the people is the lack of visualization.
Yeah.
The inability to imagine what it's going to look like or running wild with their imagination about what it's going to look like.
But I had never heard that it was coming back to us to go to PND and ask them for the model.
It's just a suggestion.
It's just a suggestion.
Yeah.
It's a suggestion.
We could actually, we could probably do it ourselves.
I can't.
They've never made trash cans.
I don't think the Borough's been shy about authorizing the expenditure funds to study issues.
Right, that's true.
And, and so maybe it would be money well spent to, to, I think totally, I think the Photoshop idea is a fabulous idea. Take a picture of it existing now. There's lots of people who are techno-savvy and could Photoshop in a, the extended wall and show exactly what it's going to look like. And I don't think that's going to cost very much money.
Joe?
Bill, something else?
There might be a way to get PND to be very glad to do that without an expense to the Borough. And that is to simply let PND know there's an awful lot of the population that's questioning the design as it is and that we need a better visualization of it. And if we can't get that, maybe the Borough would be interested in putting out RFQs to other engineering companies to come up with better designs. I bet they would suddenly get real interested.
Sure. May I just say something? Bill, with that statement and awful lot of the population, and I'm splitting hairs here because this room encompassed all the people that were interested in coming to this meeting tonight, it's not a lot of the population.
But 92 people signed a petition that asked you to do this.
But where are they? I mean, they knew this was happening.
Diana, one thing for years with the assembly, long before you were even in Haynes, when Tom Clay and Ed LaPerry were on the Borough Assembly, the biggest complaint is one of the complaints that you face. The most important Borough meeting there is, is the finance meetings. And they all got frustrated. They look out and there's nobody there.
Nobody there.
It's not that they don't care. Many have problems with appearing in a public meeting. Something that Jan Hill and I figured out a few years back on the Hillesky topic was something very simple. Somebody pointed out that when you have the people sitting up there to dais, people feel like they're sitting down from you, that you're up there. So meetings that started to make progress were held just right on this floor with these chairs. Just perception changes how people behave. This camera changed the behavior of how people behave in Borough meetings.
Thanks, Bill.
So there's a lot that goes into it. There's an awful lot of people out there that talk to us. We're passing along, in many cases, what's talked, said to us, and we in turn are passing it along to you. So there's a pyramid behind it.
Sure, sure. As well as behind me as by them.
Right, right.
You know, I have the...
There's lots of opinions.
Counteracting.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's the job we stuck you with, Diana. You've got to balance it out.
I do well, thank you.
Well, thanks, everyone. Really, that was a lot.